All right, again, welcome. Today is Thursday, August 7, 6:30 PM, and this is the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting in Business Sessions, so they'll be voting tonight. So before we begin, I want to make sure, Adam, do you have a chance to meet Roger? Roger was appointed in our last meeting. Make sure you do get connected.
Okay.
Great. I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Kern, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartz?
Here.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
I am here.
Could you join me in the Plen of Legits? We have a flag right behind me.
The Plen of Legits to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an amendment to the agenda as well as an addition to the amendment to the agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Does everyone have that?
Yes.
And it's just normal, this time of year, hiring addendums, so nothing too controversial. So I entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda as amended.
So moved.
A second. Any discussion? Have you seen none? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, the first agenda item, or item number five, I should say, is the Board of Presidents' report. So let's start with the recognition of Ms. Dunbar. Would you please come up? We have something for you. And as she comes up, I did want to say, you know, as most people know, Stacy has had the opportunity to move out of the district as she, her family, transitioned from high school years to college years. And we want to take this opportunity to recognize Stacy and the years that she has given to the district, both on the board, pre-board, various volunteer activities. The list is very daunting in terms of the things that you've been engaged in, in the district, and appreciate your time and effort and tireless work in the district. And certainly, it has become a better place as a result of your work, and we appreciate that. I know personally, I've enjoyed working with you on the board, learned from you, learned a lot about you, and I enjoyed time together. So with that, does anyone else have any comments to make for Stacy?
Um, I just really appreciate all the time that she put into the school board, because she's a busy lady, but Olentangie was always number one, and especially the Liberty Band boosters, and she got me into volunteering for them, and I appreciate that.
I'll still be in concessions.
Oh, Friday night? We'll see.
I can't, I can't give up concessions, so.
Good.
They said they'd let me back in.
Good.
Well, I second those comments, and I was going to ask you about the boosters on Friday night, so I'm not surprised.
I keep trying to get out, they keep pulling me.
I'm sure you'll still be there.
We've got something to present to you. Picture.
I've always wanted a picture of the two of you.
Of course, Stacy, you are welcome to stay, but we understand. One other item I'd want to cover, one other topic I want to cover in the President's Report, and that's a projected enrollment. We're at a point now where we have a projected enrollment, not actual, so I want to make sure people understand it's projected, not actual. And we'll have a better sense of actual enrollment, you know, obviously, school opens on the 13th, but we will have a better sense of actual enrollment. Based upon what we have seen, we're looking at about an increase in headcount in the neighborhood of 600 to 800, is that fair? What's interesting, at least observation I've seen so far in the numbers, is elementary is in essence flat on ERV races, about a 1% pickup. Where the growth is coming in is above 5% pickup in the middle school population and 11% pickup in the high school population. You've got a senior class rolling out that's smaller than the freshman class coming in, so you've kind of got this population coming through the system, which, you know, as we do our strategic planning, will definitely change the way we think about managing that growth and preparing for that growth. I think historically, we were very focused on the elementary levels and opening elementary schools in what would appear to be as a stabilization in the elementary population with some definite growth in middle and high school. What's interesting, too, is not just at the middle and high, but where in the middle and high. So at the middle school, you've got, Shanahan will now be the largest middle with just under 1,100 students, and it's also the fastest growing, kind of in this center 23, between 23 and 315 corridor. Similarly, at the high school level, while Liberty is the largest at about 1,900, I think 1,930 now is the number I saw, Olentangie is the fastest growing with about a 14% pickup. And so when we have Liberty probably topping out in this population, a lot of the growth is going to be coming on this side with Liberty, I'm sorry, Orange and Olentangie. So shifting patterns of population within the district as well as across elementary, middle, and high schools. Certainly, we'll know, you know, firmer numbers in the next two weeks, but certainly what we have seen is consistent, you know, with that pattern. So definitely stuff for us to think about as we get into the fall. We have DeJong come in and re-forecast, you know, the enrollment projections, and then we'll have to roll that into the work of the Facilities Committee and how we think about space and space concerns, you know, going forward. So definitely an interesting time of year with everyone getting ready to start, you know. We had sixth grade orientation yesterday, we have freshman orientation tomorrow, so for the first time, I'll have these for me, high school, middle school, and elementary all at the same time, so.
As will I.
As will as well. So that's all I had in terms of the enrollment projections. Again, we'll, we should probably definitely, oh, the last thing is the largest grade, I thought was interesting, was sixth grade, at 1,656 kids. Again, senior class at about 1,100, and so you've got this disparity at the top of the top of the house, about 500 less than, you know, that biggest population. Okay, that's all I had on enrollment, and we will firm that up, and again, probably have a complete report once we get the preschool numbers in and kind of the butts-in-seats numbers with the enrollment stuff. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lucas for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I might add that this is starting my sixth school year, and when we first got here, it was, if you recall, Orange Middle School that had the large population. So it has changed and will continue to change, and I do appreciate that update, because I think it does show that the growth, even though we're growing district-wide, it does move from west side back to east side, and it's always good to keep track of how that movement is taking place. Very short Superintendent's Report. This evening, as you know, we had the CMF/OPC contract extension. Last meeting, we did the OTA, and of course, this is consistent with OTA extension, 2% increase on the base salary for one year. It is a one-year extension which takes us into the year 2016. We will be presenting similar action for the remaining employees at the August Business Meeting, which I believe is August 20. Very competitive, as you recall from the last report I gave, with surrounding districts, Worthington's at a 2% through 2016, Dublin, Hilliard, and Southwestern at 2% through 2017. So we've been very consistent, and I believe, as I shared with the board and the community last meeting, over a five-year period, we were at about a .8%. So everyone, staff members in the entire organization have done a tremendous job holding costs, and we do appreciate their efforts. And again, we are suggesting, recommending that we extend CMF and OPC this evening. Final preparations for the new school year. As Mr. O'Brien said, Wednesday, the 13th, which is less than a week away, we will welcome right now, we are here at 19,020. I think that will settle back to about 18,800 or so, once we get, as they say, butts in seats. Some of the things we've done, we had a thank you luncheon for all of our summer personnel. As you recall, roughly two to three years ago, we went to four 10s in the summer, and that was not only for more productivity, because once they're here, they're here, but we also found that we were saving dollars in regard to that whole heating and air conditioning piece on Fridays when we shut that down. Well, every year, we try to thank those individuals, and we had that. That's kind of the closing of the summer months and the opening of the new. So we had that on July 24 at Orange High School, roughly 260 employees eligible to attend that. New Teacher Academy was July 28 through the 30th, Shanahan Middle School, and again, I think these individuals that we're putting forth on the addition to the addendum brings us to roughly 102. I know it's over 100 new teachers, I think specifically it's 102, maybe one more to go, maybe. We'll see about that one. But that was New Teacher Academy on July 28. Transportation In Service was July 28 through the 30th. That was at Johnny Cake. We had our administrative retreat on August the 1st, and that was at Eagle Creek Leadership and Challenge Center. That's out in an area where there's no cell service or very low, depending on what type of cell service you get. And that's been a very, very popular place. I think this is the third year that we've gone there, and we do a lot of team building during that time. So we had that on August the 1st, and we will have our food service in-service on August the 11th at Shanahan. And last but not least, we will have our convocation. I think you have all received invitations to that. If you have not, you are all invited. The staff members very much love seeing you there. You get an opportunity to see all 2,000, or roughly 2,000 of our employees, and we have a performance by the Orange Band, and I believe this year, the Olentangie Band. We used to do that, as you recall, in three different sessions. We've kind of trimmed that down to two sessions. Middle school, high school will go first, and then we'll have the preschool K through 5 later in that morning. So you're very much welcome to come. Liberty High School, you can come to both, you can come to one, but if you do show up, remember, we also have the vendor fair. We're all the vendors in the community, I think, right now. We're roughly at 80 vendors. We're, you can go in and tour the services and day revive. I would very much encourage you to do that. Last but not least, I want to talk, kind of change gears on you and talk about the Delaware County Opiate Task Force that has been in the works for roughly one year. We're picking up traction in regard to that. This is something coming within the next month or so, I believe September the 15th, and of course, the goal is to raise awareness, educate, eliminate opiate abuse. It is a two-day workshop to develop a community action plan, and that will be facilitated by the Attorney General's Office. I don't know if you recall, but in the spring, we attended the one put on by the Alliance at Worthington Kilborn High School. This one is basically the same type of action, and we're going to be looking for a lot of community support. This action, this task force consists of multiple agencies and community representatives, including the school system, not in the Olentangie, but surrounding Delaware County districts, the business community, the faith-based community, the law enforcement community, and last but not least, the mental health service. So this is something that we're going to get off the ground. As I say, it's kind of been in the discussion stage for roughly a year, maybe a little over a year. It's now time to start moving that forward, and we will be happy to be facilitated by the Attorney General's Office in regard to that task force. That's all I have for this evening. I would entertain any questions that the board may have at this time.
Questions for Dr. Lucas?
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the Treasurers' Report. Mr. Kern?
Yes, this evening, there's no action items underneath the, we presented for the Treasurers to get approved, but I just want to update the board on just a couple things real quick. It's fast-moving here, a five-year forecast time. We're already, it seems like you finished the fiscal year and started thinking about it already, or it's actually an ongoing process throughout the year. But actually, September 24 will be the Finance and Audit Committee meeting. It'll be here, I believe we have it at 7 o'clock, so that is scheduled, that is an open meeting to all, just a reminder that will be going on. Insurance RFP, Medical Insurance RFP. We do have, I mentioned before, through my five-year forecast presentations and throughout Treasurers' Reports, we do have an RFP out. We're getting down to, I'd say the nitty-gritty, but down to the more finalist stages. August 28, we'll sit down with three insurance carriers, go over, have some interview questions that are kind of set up, work between us and our broker, Aon Hewitt. You know, we're looking at, we're currently fully insured, we're looking at both fully insured and self-insured basis, and we'll make our, you know, recommendation come up once we get through finalist interviews. Try to have everything wrapped up by the 1st of October, so.
I have a question on the self-insurance. Does that, if we went self-insured, would that exclude us from any mandates through the Affordable Care Act?
Yes, yes. If you own, and actually, some state fees, taxes or fees are actually reduced. So while you're going self-insured, could be a risky proposition, because you're opening yourself up to those claims, but it's hard to turn your eye to the potential savings not having to pay fees out there for, you know, due to Affordable Care Act.
Well, I know one of the issues that we got, that we get into is that when you have a long-term sub or subs, subs more than, I think it's five, five days a week, the now.
It's 30 hours, kind of a week.
Yeah, 30 hours, yeah. Would that preclude our subs from, or is that a separate issue?
Our subs currently now don't have, you know, insurance.
Right, but if, but we have to watch that.
We do watch that, yeah. It still doesn't, both ways, you still have, you'd have to offer to them if they are on the average only 30 hours.
Okay.
So we monitor that on a regular basis, usually on a monthly basis, to see if there's any of those people out there. Either, you know, do we need to cut hours?
Yeah.
Or does this person, you know, do we just need to go ahead and hire this person anyways?
Mm-hmm.
Because they're going to be here, you know, going forward. So it's not too many, but we do keep an eye out for that.
You're saying you can bypass Obamacare by having things self-insured?
You can, some of the fees that are related to Affordable Care Act or Obamacare as referred to.
It's probably, it's a more cost-effective way of meeting the requirements in the Affordable Care Act.
Yeah.
You can't get around the Affordable Care Act, but there are more efficient, more cost-effective means of meeting those mandates or meeting those requirements.
Yes.
We think self-insured may be a means of meeting those requirements.
Mr. Kern, do you know if any of the districts that would be considered as peers for us have looked at that as well, and is there any data available as to what the?
Yeah, my previous district, Dublin, actually, just started this plan year, which is, they run on, as we do on a calendar year, just went back to self-insured, just pretty much for the same reason.
So you'll be able to do some due diligence on what those criteria calls?
Yes, actually, I was on a phone call before I came over here, just kind of seeing how that's going for them, and they've had pretty good experience, you know, as far as that goes, but you never know, you could have a couple of cancer cases, and of course, we do have, we'll have stop-loss insurance to cover those things. So it, a little more risk, but like I said, we haven't made a decision for either way. We're looking at both sides, though.
I know what's, what's good about the arrangement we have with Aon Hewitt is they're agnostic as to what structure we choose. I think the previous structure was biased to go with a fully insured solution because of the way their compensation was structured. I think the way we set up the Aon deal puts them in a much more objective perspective on putting a structure together that's in the best interest of the district. So I think the advice that we're getting from them, I think has been, has been good.
Been very valuable through this process, yes. You mentioned that we do pay them upfront.
Yeah, fixed fee.
So they get a fixed fee, so whatever we go with.
Doesn't matter.
And been very good about, there's tons of data that they're giving to us, that, you know, they're, with Aon being a national company, they have some resources behind the scenes that have helped it out, actuarial resources and different other things that kind of give you some good data up there, so. Can't predict how people are going to, you know, what claims you're going to have, but there's, with us and the size we are, there's some, there's some pretty good information out there.
Good.
My thing, oh, one last thing, too, talking about healthcare, wellness plan, wellness. We'll be rolling out, we have, we're using dollars from our carrier, current medical mutual. We've been able to carry over some dollars that they provide for us, but also, it's part of our RFP process, too, that we have built in at least $100,000 a year in wellness dollars that we can use. We have since partnered with Mount Carmel Health Systems, and what it kind of, probably will be kicking off more until October, like things get settled, be more robust of a program. Currently, the last, last year, we just did a biometric screening, so we're going to do biometric screenings again with the health risk assessment, but then we're also going to have health coaching, fitness classes, and offering at the building, utilizing those dollars to pay for those and stuff from carriers. So I think hopefully, employees will like it. The idea at the end was all, hopefully, is to reduce our claims at the end, so save us some dollars. So the plan would be with, kind of what we're going with, a health coach or someone fitting to be out at least once a month at each building, which is pretty, pretty unique with all the amount of buildings we have and the distance and stuff, but, and employees can go from one building to the next, so it's, if they can't meet with that person one day or do a fitness class that day, they can go somewhere else. So we'll even probably do some stuff in the summer, not every, every building, but some stuff periodically, so hopefully that will go well. They've had experience doing it. They actually work now with fitness classes with Worthington Schools, and I believe Groveport is another one now they're currently working with. They haven't done the health coaching and stuff, that's what we're going to use them for, but we'll see how it goes.
Good.
Get some positive, hopefully positive results. Of course, it's voluntary, but hopefully, we're, hopefully people will take advantage of it. That's it.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kern? Okay, public participation? Ready? Okay. So move right into item nine, discussion item, so invite Mr. Gordon to come up. He's our first item. Talk about turf update and OIAA contract.
Let me pass those around. While those are going around, I will start with the contract. As we'd all be aware, we've been looking with OIAA as a start to getting formal agreements with organizations using our school facilities. The first one that we will present at the next board meeting is with OIAA. What this agreement allows us to do is, again, formalize our agreements with them, start collecting a moderate rental fee for facility use, including baseball and softball fields, gymnasiums, et cetera, so we can start recovering some of our costs for the use of those fields, and also help with maintaining the fields and the facilities as they continue to age. We've talked quite a bit about the aging of the district and our facilities, basketball courts, gymnasiums continue to age, as well as our baseball and softball fields. So while we're not in a position yet, where we have to start with a lot of maintenance tools such as replacing backstops and fencing, it's time to start thinking about those things and start collecting fees that will go towards replacement of those. So this is the first step, again, in getting something to replace that we can work with the organizations to formalize that, make sure we have liability coverage, working with these groups, which we try to do now, we still have formal agreements. And as we, as we continue to grow as a district and the youth programs continue to grow, we're getting more and more organizations, like the OIAA or Little League or the travel basketball programs, you name the sport, either there's an organized group that wants to use our facilities for multiple teams, and then the, we have individual coaches as well to start a volleyball, J.O. volleyball, or AA basketball, or travel baseball team. So it's just, it's continued to grow. We need to get our hands around that a little better and tighten the reins to make sure we are able to keep track of who's coming and going and what's there. So this is the first step. Again, next month, you'll see more of that, the more of this contract, and that'll be the first. Once we have a formal agreement with OIA, which is the largest individual organization, we'll start conversations with Little League and with the groups for volleyball and basketball as well to get those things formalized. The paper that I passed out for you is a turf update, and we discussed, at the time we put turf in, what our turf replacement would be, and what you have in front of you is a summary of the money we've been able to set aside currently for turf rentals, and then a projection going forward based on what we know today of income, some assumptions, and where we think we'll be at in 10 years is what we know right now. If you look at the sheet in front of you, the total for year one at Olentangie High School, we have $80,000. Liberty High School's $81,000, and Orange High School is $79,000. And what those totals are made up of is residual Pepsi money we had from our previous Pepsi contract, the first year's payments from the new Pepsi contract that we're, we're actually still, we can get that into the process, but we've included it here since we now have a formal contract that we know that it's coming. The differential in the totals for each one is the gate receipts. It's 10% of the athletic gate, so each year, the gates fluctuate. In a lot of cases, it depends on where Olentangie's playing Liberty at or where Orange is playing Olentangie at. So those, whoever's hosting that game tends, whether it's basketball, football, or any sport, tends to get more, more of a gate, so that year-to-year will fluctuate a little bit. So as you can see, we've got a good start. Going forward, down at the bottom, you'll see it's projected years two through five. I've made projections just to kind of get some idea of where we think we'll be in 10 years, and currently, in the agreement with OIA, and informally we discussed, is a rental that they will be using our stadiums for football in the fall. So we've got a cost that we know right now going forward, we're going to maintain with that, as well as we assume that we can bring in $2,000 of other rentals at each stadium. And then our athletic gates, I've averaged at $13,000. Again, that's a little bit lower than what we brought in this year, but we want to be conservative with it, as well as our current Pepsi contract for each field currently bringing in $11,666. And I only used, when you look at years two through five and years six through 10, I only used Pepsi contract up through year five, because we do not have a contract beyond that, so I didn't want to assume that we would have something going forward. Our hope is that at the end of the five years, we'll sign another contract with Pepsi, but since we don't have one in place, I didn't want to make the assumption of it would be there. Again, trying to be conservative about it. As you can see, after 10 years, each of these schools are over $300,000, which is what both turf companies installed turf told us to expect as replacement cost. Being these numbers are conservative, hopefully we do get another Pepsi contract or more rental income work forwards. We hope that it's $300,000 in the 10 years, or in this case, now nine years, I guess, looking forward, that we'll have that money in place, and it'll be $300,000, but if there is some increase for inflation or some additional costs for turf installation, anything that we are able to increase clean out and then, obviously, would put us in a better position to absorb those increases if they should happen. So any questions?
So I think this is very helpful.
Yes.
Very good. My reaction is the rental revenue seems light, in that, when we originally sort of talked about this, that we would be generating more rental revenue, either from hosting or
tournaments. High school tournaments, playoff games, which I know is somewhat reflected in the
gate piece versus the rental piece.
Right.
But I also know that there are clubs and organizations that would love access to that turf, that, so I guess part of the question is, who's accountable at each building for making sure that the rentals are sufficient?
Yeah.
And that the schedule in the turf is being appropriately utilized?
And to add to that, I was just signing up for my, to work at our football games today, and Jay told me that they have so many events scheduled that Music Boosters at Olentangie, which has been contentious, has now agreed to share the concessions.
Because they can't staff it.
Yeah, because they can't staff it with the athletic boosters. So I took that as a good sign for Olentangie, because they had struggled with that.
We double just had their annual.
Marching.
Marching unit competition. We need to get money off of that.
And to address your question, it's a combination of the athletic directors and then the facility, or the business department in facilities. We've talked about administratively, we're working on establishing some guidelines. What we are finding is starting to happen is our support organizations who put in the turf are drawing a lot of things through there, and of course, we have given them the facilities rent free other than our cost, as a lot of groups are working, performing through them, and we're going to establish some guidelines to kind of, we don't want to take away their fundraisers, but there are some groups that we think probably are school rentals that should be going through the school, if nothing else, to cover some liability in those things, so. So going forward, we'll get any tighter guidelines with that and kind of getting it worked out to the booster groups and to the athletics that we need to kind of streamline what or clarify what goes through the boosters and what goes through outrat and what needs to go through the district.
Yeah, I encourage that to get done as quickly as possible.
So
The further you go and the more practices get developed, the harder it is
Right.
To undo that.
So just to understand what you're saying, so for example, field hockey might have a showcase, and so they would book it through the boosters to help raise money for field hockey and not necessarily go
Correct.
Which in turn helps the field hockey meet their obligation to pay
To pay for the turf, right.
Yeah, which is, which is absolutely, that's great, that's what we're encouraging.
Right.
What we, what we don't want is somebody coming in, say another school that doesn't have a stadium, or somebody that doesn't have turf, wants to come in and use turf, and try to use the boosters
Gotcha.
To use the group or a, for example, a
Club.
Boys lacrosse program running a lacrosse tournament is a great fundraiser for them, and we do that.
Right.
A travel lacrosse group running a field would necessarily, should not necessarily go through our lacrosse boosters to raise funds versus that being a district rental. But that's the things that we have to kind of clunk down on, and it's evolved over the years, and these things have committed, and now with turf and the higher volume paperwork, you can really just say those guidelines enforce those.
Well, that's a little bit of my accountability question, so there needs to be one person that has that accountability that we can then frankly hold accountable to make sure that, you know, the lines are clear, the guidelines are very crisp, so that we don't get into these situations of, you know, disharmony between the schools.
One, I would say, this is, this was year one, too?
Yeah.
So it was a fill-out process to try to understand, and having just come from that process, to try to remain in a position then to provide capital support for things that the district does not pay for was always part of that process, at least at Orange? I guess I'd ask you one other question, Jeff. So Orange has the smallest physical footprint there for the least amount of parking. So as the athletic directors go for a tournament game and other things like that, what will happen is they'll be, Orange will probably be disqualified for some of those things because they determine there's not enough parking in that general area. And so there may be some issues where you're going to have some of the other schools that will have a better chance at having a little bit more money every year. So I'm just throwing that out there as a, you know, we're not going to build parking lots so we can get tournaments. That cost benefit ratio will never work out, but
And I'm not sure that, you know, Orange Middle School being there, they have a lot of parking for middle school.
They do, and
They take that into account.
They do take it into account. I don't know if they, I don't, John Betts is, Mr. Betts is probably the best person to ask that question, but, but, so I mean, I, coming from that, you know, I always appreciate the ability to use the field, however, there may be some ways to
And I don't want to, you know, prohibit our teams from raising money because they've made commitments to, to help pay the initial payment on the turf, you know, but again, I don't want the club teams backdooring it in.
And my point is we need to be as clear as we can, as early as we can, to avoid as many misunderstandings as possible.
The A.D. is the best, in my opinion, the best gatekeeper of that, if he understands the policy and the process, and then tell the booster, the existing booster club, more of what the process is and what the parameters are for which they can make that commitment then.
Indeed, he's, in us, his, my responsibility, Mr. Ryan, is really is here. It's my responsibility, he's business manager, still his director, to do that and coordinate that to the athletic directors. Establishing those guidelines will help me enforce that, you know, you've got to have those guidelines, and we have the support to enforce those guidelines. So that's, it's our responsibility in our department to give out, to assign those, design baseball fields, design basketball courts, run out turf to those things. So that's where we have to make those decisions and do that, so that we can work with the athletic director, but at the end, that one person is right here in our department.
Okay. And your estimates here for rentals, they're based on dialogues with these organizations, not just some internal estimate that's
The estimate on rentals?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the OIA rental is actually based on our contract, and we're going to be, we'll be approving next month, and the 2,000 rentals will be some of the rentals we've had this year, and some of the rentals that we've had that we didn't necessarily bring back, and we will bring back in the future. So that 2,000 is conservative. I think as you go forward, it's going to be quite a bit more, but again, I'm going as conservative based on what we have this year going forward. Now, next year, the year, I need more history, I need more information, it'll change. We get to year five and have another Pepsi contract, that will change it as well. So we'll, you know, every year, we'll update and do that.
Then I have questions on the OIAA contract, and you and I had discussed this a little bit last night, but I want to discuss it so that people know this. Can you talk to us about how you go about, because I was contacted by an outside organization saying, how can I get baseball fields? OIAA has reserved all the baseball fields, and after speaking to you, I know now that is not the case. So can you explain to people how that is done?
Yeah, it's, it may need three, four hours for that, but I'll catch you in a brief. Nine years ago, when I started, OIA did have all of our gymnasiums and all of our baseball and softball fields. As other organizations came along, such as Little League is a good example, as they continued to grow and OIA stayed the same, you know, Little League thought OIA would really drop numbers because they came along. What happened is we continued to get more and more athletes in the community, so as OIA really stagnated or grew much slower, Little League kind of caught up, and then they balanced out to where we've assigned fields. When you, when you look at Little League and their associated travel, and you look at OIA and their associated travel, and softball programs, the number of kids, the field's really evenly dispersed, but the need for fields, you know, it's kind of like a glass that, we have this many fields, but the glass for need for fields is this high. We've given out all that we can get and tried to balance those out. So I've got every, OIA, Little League, Independents, I've received just this week, three independent email, or two emails from Independent, one from a group on the west side asking for more fields we don't have. I can't, you know, at this point, it's like we've done what we can do to equalize what the district has. I can't pull fields from one and give to another, and now this, you know, they've got less, they've got more, we kind of, we're at the point where it's equal, equal out, and the need for fields has to come through somewhere other than the district. We've balanced it out, we've assigned fields, we look at it every year, if one would drop numbers or increase numbers, we can adjust it, but right now, we just, the needs created what we have, community-wide, not just as a district, just as a community, there's more baseball and softball players in the community regardless of who they play for, and we have fields to do that with. So it's, we've tried to balance them out, we've worked to keep it equal, is, again, as Little League grew, we balanced that out to where OIA got less, and we equal that out. One of the other problems we have is on the west side of the district, on the west side as a district, we have less fields than we have on east side. So we get a big push in the west side, well, over there, they've got more fields, or, you know, we don't have very many fields on the, on the west side, but it's just, there's not as many fields. There are parks over there on these fields, but we don't control who gets the parks, that's a contract. And there's been times where leagues have said, well, you should give us more fields because they have a contract with a park. But if the park, the next, that contract expires a year from now, and the other group gets the contract then, what do we do? We go back and pull fields from the other group and give them out, so we can really only control the fields that we have. So that's, that's the problem, you know, ideally, I'd love to go and give everybody, hey, have a field, you know, it's getting your practice through. We worked hard, and at times, we keep a couple of fields for independent teams, we had eight or nine teams on one field practicing because we just don't have enough.
And I guess given that, and I know it's a very hard challenge to beat, given the supply-demand dynamic, we should make sure that we're just partnering with the best partners.
Right.
Those organizations that are going to be the best partner in terms of meeting the needs of the athletic groups across the district, as well as taking care of the facilities, maintaining and enhancing those facilities. So it's going to make sure we always have that lens of making sure we're partnering with the best organizations across the district that are most aligned with what we're trying to accomplish as a district.
Yeah, because I really don't care about a team on the west side complaining, I mean, the west side of Columbus, you know, not the west side of our district, you know, so yes.
I was going to let you go for a while.
The west side of, you know,
I'm glad you clarified.
270, you know, you know, asking us for fields if they're, you know.
On the flip side, I've had several groups come to me and say, I'm spending $5,000, $6,000 a year renting facilities in other communities, and I'd rather spend that money here. And they can't get access to facilities because other organizations have monopolized that time, and may not be as good a partner. And so we want to make sure that we're partnering with the best groups that have the same alignment of interest that we have.
I would agree with that, that obviously the balance there is the two biggest hurdles, and ones that we are most aligned with, but then, you know, I have a hard time when we get to requests to give us Independents.
I agree. I totally agree. It's a hard problem.
They, they agree with that, but we still need to give them places for community members to, so that's, that's what we struggle with every day of trying to find space and accommodate. That's not just baseball, it's basketball courts.
It's lacrosse fields.
Yes.
Everywhere we go, it's a balancing act. We try to be, you know, be as fair about it, be as, you know, try to accommodate everybody where we can. Sometimes the latecomers, maybe baseball is for example, will get some that will show up and, you know, they've been just going to the place of practicing, then once OIA kicks in or Little League kicks in, they start to get kicked off, they'll call me in, in late April and say, I need a baseball field for our games and our practices. Well, I've got three requests in the email box just from the last two days right now, requesting fields today for fields in the spring. So when I get those, April, I can't, those I can't always accommodate, and that's the, tell them no, and they're not happy because they don't realize everybody else is reserving fields. And I think what it is, is the years have gone by, whether they were calling in Jan or February, and then, oh, it's tight, now it just keeps getting earlier and earlier. So it's, it's, we try to accommodate as many as we can to be fair about it going forward, but it's, it's a balancing act for sure.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Gordon? This is a good update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the state assessment update, Mr. Rafe and Mr. Fettig. Welcome back from vacation, Mr. Rafe.
Thank you. Great to be back. I can't wait for the students and staff to get back full-time and get back to edit my research papers, which just brings great energy to graduate tour schools, so looking forward to a really great year. We're here to give you an update actually on those ongoing changes in our state assessment program, and that kind of runs into how it affects our calendar planning process, because you know, you get questions on that, on that process. So, you know, as you know, the legislature, even though, even when they're not in session, tend to make the news with regards to testing and curriculum changes, so it certainly affects our work here in the district. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fettig, because he's going to get, he's going to talk about all the specifics, and then we'll take the questions jointly.
Good evening. So I feel like we've been talking about these assessments for quite some time, and it looks like we're going to get to continue to talk about them. So as you know, Ohio is scheduled to move to online or computer-based assessments this year, phasing out the old Ohio achievement assessments for new computer-based assessments. This, beginning this year, students in grades three through eight will take assessments, and there's some differences by grade level, but in general, three through eight in English, reading, math, science, and social studies. And high school freshmen this year, and it will, it will move up as the freshmen move up, so this is the first high school class that these changes will apply to, will not be taking the OGT, but will be taking end-of-course exams in Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, English IX, English X, English XI, U.S. history, U.S. government, physical science, biology. Some of those high school exams will be part of the graduation requirements, some will not. But there are still some things being worked out unfortunately by the legislature, so that we're not quite sure how it's going to work then from, from this point. However, what we do know is that the state has decided to offer some leniency on the implementation of the online portion of the new assessments. So student, or districts have the opportunity to opt out of online assessments if they're not ready to move to online. The challenge with online is not all the students can test at once because you have multiple students per device, whereas with a paper pencil, every student gets a test during the test window. So it makes the test window much, much longer. So as a district, we are considering if we want to implement online or computer-based assessments at all this year, and weighing the costs and benefits of that as we consider the cost of devices that might be needed, the time spent testing, the time that would be spent repairing, and the uncertainty of whether or not come spring, the computer-based test will even be available. So that's something that we will continue to work through and keep you updated on. Another thing to keep in mind is this year's sophomores are still taking the old OGT, they will be the last class to take the OGT, along with any juniors or seniors who have not yet passed a section, they will still take that because their graduation requirement relates to the OGT, but the freshmen below have a graduation requirement that relates to these new assessments. So because of the uncertainties with assessments, moving into the next item, which is the calendar process, we are not able, as we would like, to approve school calendars years in advance as we've done historically. Typically, by this time of the year, we'll be the next year's school calendar and potentially even the year after school calendar, it would be adopted by the board in maybe three-year chunks. Right now, we have not yet adopted a 15, 16 school calendar because we don't know the test windows for 2015, '16. The test windows are established by the state, they're highly inflexible, and again, if online or computer-based assessments stay, the window is quite large, and basically encompasses more or less all of the second semester of the school year, which makes spring break and other days hard to point or plot on a calendar without knowing when those days fall. So the state, as best I know, has not given an indication of when they're going to release those dates. So we're trying to work a balancing act between preparing for next year and giving our community what they would like, which is next year's school calendar as soon as they can have it, with also not having to change the school calendar on them at the last minute, or even not at the last minute, but at all once it's been adopted, as we also have had to do in the past because of state assessment changes. So as a district, we will begin the process of planning next year's school calendar. In general, we're looking at schools starting about the same time as it starts this year, ending around Memorial Day, as it will this year, and spring break should be able to fall between the two spring testing windows around the end of March, beginning of April, if the state doesn't change things too dramatically from this year being 14, '15 to the future being 15, '16. So we're going to begin the process of vetting it through the administration and through the OTA, and hopefully, we'll be prepared then to make a recommendation for a calendar for 15, '16 to the board as soon as we can, but we are still just waiting in both of these areas for some clarity from the state. We will go ahead and take any questions that might be able to
It's experimental this year?
I mean, so
The online testing, you said you don't have to do it, but
No, you, we have to take the tests. Whether or not we take them online is, has become optional. Yeah, so it could be paper pencil or it could be computer-based.
Well, we have a very strong indication that the online tests are certain. They will, but doesn't, you know, and again, having enough bandwidth in your district, there's still some districts that have dial-up service in the state. So the reliability of the networks and those kind of things have been in question, having enough devices to take the tests are, are an issue. So we, we feel very certain that the online tests are coming. So what we're vetting right now is a phase in of trying to gear up to get enough devices. We've addressed our bandwidth issue, but getting enough devices to be ready, to buy enough devices in one year would be a big number. So we're going to try and plan it, but one of the options the state has given us is to, to start the online testing with fourth and fifth grade. That was their recommendation, so, so that's one of the solutions we're discussing as to how we enter into this arena, rather than do, because the other piece of entering into the arena, then you're, you're training that many more teachers all at once to administer the
To give a test.
Everyone's got to administer the test.
Are they dictating how many, I have to take the test at the same time, like the whole class? You're talking in terms of number of computers?
No, they're dictating the number of testing days that you have, so then the number of tests, students to test at one time is kind of a divisor of them. So you have this many devices, this many students, and they all have to take the test within this timeframe, so.
But there's so many factors that go into it, you know, we have to accommodate for students who have to take the test in a small group setting, so you need addition, you potentially need additional devices to address that. We have, we have devices in our computer labs, say, at the high school level, but we also have classes assigned to the computer in the computer lab, so we can't necessarily use those machines.
Well, I guess, how would you balance that out with personally own devices? Why couldn't kids bring in their own?
So the, the test specifications require that a computer meets certain requirements, and it's not out-of-the-box requirements. For the most part, they have to be set up ahead of time, they have to be prepped by our technology department. ahead of time. They have to be prepped by our technology department. So students have to lead. Yeah, they can't, it's not that you can just walk in and log into the website and take a test. You have to be able to close down like your internet browser so that you can't cheat.
At one time Stan, at one time Stan Hepner, the then superintendent of public instruction, had a public presentation, just stood up and helped us out. He's going to be taking tests on, on that thing. That was a little premature.
So, Mr. Fettig, just a quick question. What's, what's the opt-out date for the district then, to make the determination this year of yes or no on the fourth and fifth grade versus the everyone doing it on paper?
Soon as possible. The, the state has not given us a date on their end. So...
So when will your recommendation come back?
I imagine we would have to train it by the next board meeting, only because if it requires any purchase, we would need time to purchase and turn it around.
On the ninth graders, I was reading the law, what you were saying is that the ninth graders are going to start taking these end-of-course exams.
Correct.
But I read the law that they take the end-of-course exams or pass the ACT or SAT or the career test. But what you're saying is regardless, they're going to have to take these end-of-course exams.
As of right now, that's our plan, is to take the end-of-course exams, because while you raise a very good point, I'm still not convinced whether that's a loophole that would get closed, or if that's an option that we could really pursue. So we could always move to that option if we chose to as a district, but right now, it's in the best interest of the freshman students to go out and take a test.
And I think that I read today that they set the cutoff scores at 18. On, that's the...
As a composite rather than as subject?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. And I'll try, I'll find it for you. It was, I'm pretty sure that it was, because the State Board of Education has been releasing their rules now, but I'll send it to you because I think it was 18. And I thought that was really low.
Yeah. That is the college readiness standard for English in the subject.
Oh, I'm talking of end-of-course exams.
Oh.
Yeah. So they're setting the, like, I don't know what it would be.
18 more.
18 points, you know, out of, I don't know if it's out of 50 or out of...
Yeah, I haven't seen them.
Yeah. So, but that would be like your English end-of-course exam, you would have to score an 18 on. But I don't know if it's like an 18 out of 30, 18 out of 50, or, yeah. They haven't released the ACT/SAT scores yet in...
Well, those college readiness benchmarks are already set.
By the state, right.
By ACT.
By ACT.
And, but SAT's changing their way that they're, they're going back to the old way of scoring.
I mean, the other thing, we, I mean, we do use those state assessments for program evaluation.
I mean, I guess you could use them for graded tests, you know, end-of-year exams that show up on your report card.
And I would imagine they're going to be the growth, the measure of growth calculation.
True, that could be.
State report card. So, you know, those are all the things that are in the state report card. We want to make sure we're monitoring our, our performance on those.
Yeah.
The old...
Oh, and just one other thing, going back to state report card, these state report cards that we usually expect as soon as school starts are delayed now, coming out until the middle of September.
We heard that.
The only thing, I think was the only tangy-dally news this morning. encapsulated your comments pretty well, I thought. But I did notice what you just said, you have the double R, the R and the OR. That's how I...
Yes. And that's how, I've asked Tom Ash from Olazbo, and that's how he is reading it. And so I think it's, somebody did not think, it's one of those things, it happens all the time. They make the law, and they never think of how you're going to then enact that law, you know, and practice that law. And they'll, I think somebody will figure it out sooner or later, but we need it sooner.
And the last thing I'm going to leave you with, going back to the online assessments or computer-based assessments, is that for 15-16, as it stands, the law says that we will be using computer-based assessments, grades three through 12. That's what it had said originally for this year when they provided the opt-out. But while Mark mentioned a phase-in, that would be an ideal solution. But as of right now, there is no law beyond this year to indicate which direction the state's going to move. So, a lot of questions.
Anything else for Mr. Fettig, Mr. Ray?
Thanks.
Thank you, General.
They also cover the calendar? Are they coming back up?
Yeah, they said that they can't, you can't do it now because of unknown...
It'll be coming at you probably in October, November.
Okay.
We know what the calendar is for this school year, though.
That's correct.
It was handed to me at work the other day.
Oh, we'll let you know.
This is a reminder. We published it.
I'm glad you said that, that it's settled for this year.
It's settled for this year. There will be no changes.
Okay. Public participation session number two. Next is the board action item. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the OAPSC, ASME, AFL-CIL Local 39, representing maintenance, custodial, and field staff, as discussed in Dr. Lucas's superintendent's report.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Dr. Lucas, do you want to present the superintendent action items?
I present superintendent action items A through E.
Can you pull out A 1 through 6?
For approval, please.
I believe we have some polls. A 1 through 6?
A 1 through 6.
All right. So do you want to take them first?
Do number 6 individually.
So let's take 1 through 5.
Yes.
Now, we'll do 1 through 5 first, then we'll do 6, then we'll do the rest.
I present superintendent action items A 1 through 5 for approval.
Okay, so let's be clear. Items 1 through 5, the employment of certified individuals and new teacher academy stipend, extended service contracts, supplemental positions, and pupil activity supervisor positions for the 14-15 school year. Those are the items for which we are voting. So we have a motion. Do you want a second? Oh, no, we have a presentation. Any motion?
Still moved.
In a second?
No second.
Okay. Any discussion on items 1 through 5? Please call a roll, Mr. Green.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. So those superintendent actions, 1 through 5, pass 4 to 1. Okay, we'll now go to present.
Superintendent action items A 6 for approval, please. I'll move.
I'll second. Any discussion? Want to mention why we're pulling this?
Oh, legally, I'm not allowed to vote on my husband's individual contract.
As the girl's head golf coach.
Right, of which she has been for...
A long time.
A long time.
Got it. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Obstain.
Mr. White?
No.
Okay, that item passes 3 to 1 to 1. Okay, now, Dr. Lucas, you have to present the remainder.
I present superintendent action items A 7, B, C, D, N, E for approval, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
I said a question on D, on the auctioning for the items over 500. What are the guidelines for that? Like, are they listed on the website? Or what are the guidelines for disposing of items versus putting them on auction? Like, can they be electronics? It's like, how is it monitored?
We're going to call up Mr. Gordon, who runs that process, to answer that question.
Yes. Throughout the, historically, we used to store items and have a one big auction at the end of the year, items that weren't feasible for school use anymore. For example, a lot of the chairs and desks that were in Shanahan originally, we just, three, four years ago started replacing. So they're quite a bit of plastics crap. We get a lot of that old furniture that's not good for school use any longer, that we had one auction. We'd have that big auction at the end of the year. We'd have to pay a lot of overtime, hire an auctioneer to have that. There's now several online organizations that cater to school government bodies. One of them is DougFields.com, which is the one that we use. We have a contract with them where they take a percentage of the sales and then pass a check on us for the balance, which works out great for us. We have so many, we only have one storage building. We have so many things going through, it's constantly full. So now we're replacing cafeteria deals in about 13, 15 years, start getting in bad shape. We're replacing a couple of buildings with our cafeteria tables this year. So rather than haul them back to storage and try to make room for them, we're actually auctioning them now, knowing our new tables are on the way, so that they can be taken out. So stuff that's not feasible for continuing use for school use, for things that we don't use anymore or outdated.
So they're just put up during the entire year on the website?
Yeah.
It's not waiting till the end?
Yeah.
Electronics?
There, there are very few electronics. We do recycle a lot of the computers and those things. And that way, they'll be able to sell hard drives and things like that on, on the internet. I don't, I don't know that we really bring in the computers or printers. That all, I think, is recycled. It's more like furniture. When we took out the, the old photography labs at each of the high schools, that equipment was taken from one, we had anything to do with this. We put that on the auction. We were able to sell that that way versus probably something we would have scrapped otherwise.
Are they able to control or know things are being given away to people? And they're like, oh, well, this, this computer here doesn't, it's not good anymore. So, you know, they just give it to one of them.
There's a form. It's, it's a disposition form. Anything that is of enough value to be reported as one of our assets, when they, when that's disclosed of, they have to fill out that form and submit it to our office, which I sign, and one of the treasurer signs that one as well, to pull things out. So we don't make donations or give things away. And that's just a regular, we inventory our assets yearly in each classroom and in the buildings. So that's something that, you know, we catch that, we hope to catch what's going on. We don't, you know, things we don't do, so we don't, like our tables that we have, our flooring tables, we don't loan those out like graduation parties and things like that because school assets, we want to try to tie, tie handle and have to try to avoid exactly what you're talking about.
I appreciate it.
But you're right. The inventory control process is a process that's reviewed by finance group, by the state auditor, and it's proper oversight and about tagging and maintaining that inventory.
Yeah. But when we've done the auctions in the past, we've got an individual list of those items we had on here. Down as, as small as we can. But again, it's just so many throughout the year that rather than pile it up, and really, you lost a lot of money previously by hiring, all the overtime and all the work to assemble that, spend two or three days clearing one location, and then holding the auction. So we've actually found that it's been more cost-effective for us to do it this way as well.
All right. Any other discussion on those items? No questions? Okay. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Those items pass 5 to 0. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to go into executive session. And the executive session is permitted by Section 121.22 G2 of the Ohio Revised Code to discuss the purchase of property for public purposes. There will be no action when we return, other than to adjourn. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Summon.
Go second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Our next meeting is August 20th. Here.